Let's resume. This is a session on labor and in all fairness, I will first ask our staff to remove all the raised hand markings. Members, if you want to speak, please now press the raise hand button in Zoom. I will first invite Secretary for Labor and Welfare to deliver opening remarks and then the floor will open. Chairman members. Recurrent spending of labor and manpower development in 2022-2023 is estimated to be $2,980 million, representing an increase of $430 million over the revised estimates of $2,550 million last year, that's 16.8%. I will be brief in the following. In terms of the labor portfolio of the Bureau, we are mostly concerned with legislative amendments such as abolishing the offsetting mechanism of MPF and also the Employment Amendment Bill 2022. And soon we will be submitting legislative amendments into electrical on review of the protection of wages on the solvency fund. There are also policies relating to employment issues such as reviewing the content continuous contract requirement under the employment ordinance and reviewing the code of practice for employment agencies. We meanwhile should continue to work on enhancing occupational safety and health and work on reducing risks for high-risk processes and works. In the coming financial year, we also need to roll out a number of initiatives such as private rehabilitation program for employees injured at work. The estimated expenditure is about $434 million. Our manpower. As mentioned in the budget, we will work on the continuing education fund. The purpose of continuing education is to promote lifelong learning. And the government will further raise the subsidy ceiling from $20,000 to $25,000 per applicant. And we're also going to remove the upper age limit. In other words, it's truly lifelong. No matter your age, you can make use of the continuing education fund. We believe the new initiative will be implemented in the second half of this year benefiting about 760 eligible persons on employees retraining. As you know, since October 2019, we rolled out the love upgrading special scheme and we have had four rounds and for the fifth round, it was launched in January this year. We expect to benefit about 20,000 trainees. And over 700 regular training courses are provided by the employees training board, retraining board. And this year over 100,000 training places were provided and half of them will be employment related. That concludes my opening. I welcome questions from members. We have Look Hong Man, I'm in you, Lam Chan Sing, Michael Lo, Quai Kung, Dennis Long, Sunny Ten, Standing Wong, Han, Person, Long, Chow Shu Chong. Each will have four minutes, starting with Mr. Look Hong Man. Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, good afternoon. I'd like to follow up on this question that is 033, a question I earlier put about continuing education fund. Sorry, I haven't switched on the camera. Okay, now it's on. That's 033, a question I put about continuing education fund. First of all, I need to thank the secretary. You mentioned that the subsidy ceiling would be raised from $20,000 to $25,000 starting this financial year. Many people, especially young people, I believe are supportive of this move. According to the administration's reply, in the past five years, in terms of the number of subsidy recipients by academic qualification awarded, we have the figures provided. And I do want to follow up on one of the question, one of the highlighted areas. And that is on associate degree and postgraduate diploma. Only single-digit number of subsidy recipients have been recorded. Whereas for bachelor degree, master's degree, comparing to say executive diploma or certificates of attendance, there is a big difference from 20,000 plus. You see the contrast with the single-digit number of recipients. May I know why? The recipients have taken these courses in this pattern about raising the ceiling from 20 to $25,000. If some candidates have used up the 20,000 subsidy amount, does it mean that with the raised ceiling to $25,000, they can have additional $5,000 for spending? Last question, in the past three years, on two occasions, the administration raised the subsidy amount of CEF. And I think this is well received. But may I know the rationale behind? Of course, lifelong learning is our common goal. Hong Kong is a knowledge-based economy, but I want to know the government's thinking. Well, the BPA have been appealing to the government to increase the amount to $40,000. Would it be possible? Secretary Chairman. About certificate courses, associate degree courses. And the candidates receiving subsidy under the CEF. This phenomenon has gone on for quite some time. Our understanding is that these are relatively shorter courses. And the candidates are relatively younger. So these are the age portfolio using or profile using the CEF. Of course, we can set up our publicity effort. About the second question. That is as announced in this budget, we are raising the subsidy ceiling from 20 to $25,000. Like Mr. Look said, for those who have exhausted the $20,000 subsidy, they will be given 5,000 extra. Third, the rationale is this continuing education requires a multi-pronged approach. We need cooperation from, say, education institutes. We have training vocational institutes providing the courses. And so the CEF is the basis on which we encourage members of the public to have lifelong learning so as to catch up with social development because as seen in the past, courses under the CEF are usually one or two years in advance of the courses rolled out by other education institutions. In other words, they are able to be more flexible and adapted to market needs. For example, for blockchain training, the courses actually appeared under CEF much earlier than other courses available. In other words, the CEF can help cope with social changes and the public's need to have lifelong learning. Mr. I'm in you. My question is on retraining and CEF. I'd like to follow up on 034 and serial number 562, question serial number. You mentioned that the CEF plays a, an important role in society. And yet we see overlapping between courses under the CEF and courses under the ERB. Usually, we make use of CEF to take certificate courses. There is a lack of coordination or division of labor. They certainly plan to implement proper manpower planning and divide work among CFERB, etc. Especially for the Education Bureau, you also have the student allowance of a student family allowance office. Is it possible for the government to consider provide or conducting comprehensive analysis for working adult learners so that you can draw a proper manpower planning on the retraining mechanism in Hong Kong? Chairman. Well, that seems to be a question on policy matters and I'll try to answer this question like my answer to Mr. Look's question. In terms of, say, training and continuing education, these different areas play different roles. So for some organizations, they may provide courses or instructors under the ERB or under the CEF or other mechanisms. However, each, each system has its constraints. We need to dive, we need diversity to enrich the content. And yeah, I do agree that there is overlapping or similarity. Because the training institute basically or the training service provider actually may be the same one. But they may target different candidates or they may have different modes of operation. And that means for CEF, there is greater flexibility. So if you want to be flexible, you can't put in too much rules and regulations. We need to consult stakeholders and hold discussions before we introduce new planning and reallocate resources at that usually means two or three years. Whereas for the CEF, the service providers are aware of the needs in the market. And they can register their courses as quickly as possible so that interested candidates can receive the training they need quicker. So this is not a matter of coordination. So as to give full play to, so as to allow different institutions to give full play to the streams. On the contrary, micro management will hamper flexibility and also hamper the training courses delivered to candidates in this fast-paced society. Mr. Lam Chan Sing. Chairman, Secretary, I'd like to follow up on 007. And that's about Greater Bay Area Employment Scheme. 1,091 young people eventually were recruited. But according to media reports, 19,000 applications were received, but the majority of the candidates weren't matched with a job. May I know why? Is it that Labor and Welfare Bureau could not work single-handedly and that we should rely on the, say, the CMAB or the other units on networking? And will you continue to conduct tracking studies and see whether these young people would remain in the Greater Bay Area? Whether they would travel between two places, their career prospects, whether they have been promoted in the company? Because the data will be crucial to the government's next step on improving the Greater Bay Area Empowerment Scheme. Next about head 90, there is a, an indicator that is in relation to the time for making payments to claimants of PWIF last week, last year, it was 10 weeks. Now it's eight weeks. So the public's perception is that, of course, they welcome the shortening of the time by two weeks. But the time only indicates the period between submission of all documents and final payment. If you've ever gone through this process, if you want to apply for PWIF, you need to go to the Labor Tribunal and then together with the offsetting arrangements of the MPF, it will take at least nine months or even a year. So this indicator that is 10 weeks down to six or eight or six weeks, I don't think this is a practical indicator. Instead, I think you should review the flow of payment on the PWIF and try to compress it as much as possible. The third point is that according to the factory and industrial undertakings ordinance, inspections are carried out according to the OSX ordinance. 130,000 inspections were carried out last year and you're going to step up inspections this year. However, you need to be more focused because last year we had accidents in confined spaces such as the airport and the Su Ho One Depot. And for the confined space, you need to set up the effort to prevent accidents.
On the question of Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme, we are now conducting a overall review. We'll ask the participating young people and employers some questions. We ask questions of relevant organizations as well. And we would like to know what can be improved in the future for similar youth employment schemes. The member has mentioned the number of participants and the number of people actually getting employment. For those people who are familiar with job market will know this. Of course, you will try to apply for different jobs, but the different people may offer different jobs, even if they're offered the jobs. So the matching process is not a simple, straightforward one. We are talking about hundreds of employers and tens of thousands of applicants. But if we are to look into all the details, that will slow down the process. As for the protection of wages on insolvency payment. Well, when you have submitted all the documents to the Labor Department, then the timing, the time required for payment will be under the control of the Labor Department. But what the department cannot control is the time required for all the documents to be submitted. We can ask the applicant to submit the documents as required, but the Labor Department cannot really produce the documents required. So what the department can do is to ask the applicant to, to, to do this. So I can only monitor the Labor Department's work in relation to the time required for making the appointment upon receipt of the documents. And we, on inspections and frequency of inspections, we need to do this on a risk-based approach. For some of the construction works, there's no requirement on prior notification before work starts. So we only know if there's an incident after it has happened, only after it has happened. So we may have to look into the notification requirements, but that will be part of our job in the coming year. There may be occasions for this to be discussed at the panel, Manpower Panel. Because if we are to do the inspections to ensure safe occupational safety and health, it will require prior notification to be given. Only by doing this can we really reduce the risk involved in such works. Usually, we are talking about minor works, small-scale works projects. Mr. Look Chung Hong. Secretary, I want to ask questions about all three. A question raised by Mr. Horace Jung is about the elderly and middle-aged employment scheme. But this is a very good scheme for, for those with more work experience, those who are over the age of 40. And I myself is a member of this group. But not many people participate in this scheme. We're talking about 2,000 to 3,000 jobs match. And $5,000 of allowance is offered. And now we are seeing a better participation rate. I would like to know the total cost involved in running the scheme. That is the payment of the allowance to the employer and the employer is mandated to provide training. What more can be done to the promote this game? I've talked to many employers. A lot of them are aware of this scheme with the Labor Department publicized this in their employment services website for this YOEM, EPEM. And also in their job fairs, can this become one of the major themes? And also can you line up some training service providers? So that the scheme will be even more popular? Basically, this elderly and middle-aged employment scheme aims at encouraging employers to employ the people with experience. So what more can be done? Well, if someone tried to find a job with the Labor Department. And if if the employer tried to find suitable applicants through the Labor Department, we will offer this choice to the employer. Some employers don't really need or want to get the subsidy. So perhaps we can try to improve the communication under the ERB. Employees retraining board, most of the trainees are over the age of 40. We have some job linked training programs and employers will be eligible for the subsidy under this scheme. So perhaps we can try to find out how we can get more information and provide the same to the employer. Mr. Quai Kung. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. I have two questions. It's a reply number 006. And well, we are seeing more casual and temporary jobs in recent years. So have you been reviewing the definition of continuous employment? The Bureau says that there will be some discussion in June. I don't know where this would take us, but concerning the continued, the review on continuous and employment contract, would you cover this new casual worker economy or gig economy? Some countries would define people employed in the gig economy as a popper employees. So that we can, can we do the same so that more protection can be afforded? Second question replies as O2O is from Mr. Kingsley Wong. It's about the construction industry. The average age of register worker is 46.5 or 44. And half of them are over 40, 40 to 49 or 50 to 59. Half of them belong to these groups. We're going to see many infrastructure projects, Lentao tomorrow, then Norton Metropolis. All major programs, major projects that would involve a lot of construction workers. What is the manpower projection or Bureau? We don't only get some ballpark estimates, but it can be estimated that we need a lot of workers. Are we going to have sufficient workers? How do you attract young people to join the construction workers so that we don't have a shortage problem in regard to the young construction workers? On the question of continuous employment contract review, we are doing, we have been doing the review and very soon we will be consulting the Labor Advisory Board. Well, now we have people working as self-employed or looking for the different employers at different times. So this would have to do with the the way this will affect the way we define continuous employment contract. So we are going to well, I believe certainly the next term government will look into this. As for the medium age of construction workers, well, it's not quite, it's not that different from the total workforce as a whole. Because Hong Kong is an aging community. I believe the aging population is a bigger problem for the transport sector than this, for example, the construction sector. We will be looking into future manpower projections and, and manpower demand. It's an interbureau assignment. The Development Bureau. We'll have to look into this and many issues that it looks into will have to do with the transport and Housing Bureau as well. But it has, it's related to the housing program. And so we have to be careful to avoid a situation whereby we have the funding to take forward the project, but not the manpower to complete them. The next term government will look into all these issues. Mr. Lim Che Wing. Your mic is off, Mr. Lo. Am I getting through, Chairman? I want to ask some questions about 008, reply number 008. It's about industrial safety. I want to enhance occupational safety in Hong Kong. Well, the fines handed down by the court are on the low side, some 8,000 on average. It seems not to be a deterrent for employers in the construction industry. So would the Department of Justice look into this? Well, in the past of the penalties for drug cases will increase so that a good deterrent could be achieved. So how can you do similar things? How can we? How can we prevent more industrial accidents? Can, can we enhance the prosecution capabilities and also to secure a higher conviction rate?
On enhancing occupational safety or reducing industrial accidents, we work on publicity education as well as training. A member mentioned this point, which is close to our heart, and that is penalty. As previously discussed at the Manpower Panel meeting, it is one important work regarding legislation work this year. And very soon we will be consulting local members so that the legislative amendment proposal can be tabled into the council as soon as possible. We are working full steam on it. Previously, we consulted the labor sector. And very soon, the proposal will be ready for members' discussion. Any follow up? So when will it be submitted to LECO? Can you discuss with members again within this year before the proposal is tabled into the council? I am confident that we will be submitting this proposal within this year. Next, Mister Sunny Tang.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Secretary. I'd like to follow up on LWBL zero two nine. A question I put about the Clothing Industry Training Council. It's called CETA, and it has been in Hong Kong for many years. It provided support and nurtured many talents for the industry, including the necessary technicians. I understand from your reply, it is said that the government will review the roles and functions of CETA and will hold regular meetings to make sure that CETA will regularly, so that it can dovetail with the government's development strategies and direction of the industry's development. Is it possible to set up a council? And especially under the National fourteen five year plan? What will be the future for CETA? And as far as the Labor and Welfare Bureau is concerned, what resources would be allocated to drive the development of CETA? Well, I've been talking to many stakeholders. I consulted their views and they agree that CETA plays a very important role. In the past, the goal of CETA is to nurture talents and workers. But nowadays, instead of common workers, we're talking about INT talents. So I'd like to have your enlightenment, Secretary. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Member, for the questions. And I thank Member for showing concern on this matter. I think the Honorable Member has a lot of knowledge on the work of CETA, much more than myself. Now, according to the reply we provided, the government will keep in view the work of CETA and its development. And the future development is so that manufacturing industry will have close ties with innovation technology. The point is, we want to work and act fast to better dovetail the two portfolios. Especially if we want to be at the front line of innovation technology, this will be a very crucial. And as far as the Labor and Welfare Bureau is concerned, we want to play the role as the facilitator to take forward these initiatives. So I'll reflect your views to the government, be it the Labor and Welfare Bureau or the Innovation Technology and Industrial Council. I think that's the name. Because this is an important element in our economy, especially for textiles and clothing industry. We enjoy a lot of acclaim worldwide. I just want to supplement, Secretary. Because CETA, CETA's mandate and the terms of reference are somewhat outside the clothing and textile industry. So perhaps the LWB can follow up on it for us. And if there is any restructuring plan, do consult us. Thank you. Chairman, I thank the member for his comments. I will continue to communicate with the member. Next, Mr. Sunny Wong. In the last session, the secretary referred to employment support. So I'd like to pick up on that. Will the Labor and Welfare Bureau and the Labor Department be more proactive in helping job seekers? At the moment, they are quite passive. Like what we discussed just now. For employment support, the period should be extended to help them seek jobs more actively and rejoin the workforce. The other point is about PWIF. Since twenty twelve, there has not been any update on the reimbursement exclamation payment. Does the government have any plan to review the amount? The other point is about continuous contracts and the amendments under the employment ordinance. Can you tell us more about how it is to be amended? Can you divulge any information for our benefit? What is the amendment about? About the various allowances, employment allowances. The Labor Department's focus is that if that particular group of people in society requires greater assistance, such as the middle aged and also youth employment schemes and the disabled, we provide subsidies ranging from six to twelve months to encourage employers to employ these groups of people. And also if the trainees would stay behind in the current position, they would also be given retention allowance. So we hope that we'll work on assessing the effectiveness. As for PWIF, our work is close to completion. We will be tabling the proposal into LECO soon. I hope that this will be done within this term so that we can amend the various amounts set out under PWIF. A bill will be introduced. And I think I want to reassure members that at least the revised rates should be able to catch up with inflation. We will announce the details in due course. About the definition of continuous employment contract, as I answered the other member's question just now, we are in the process of collecting data. But unfortunately, our work has been affected by the epidemic. We need to collect data extensively. And now there's been a delay. We will try to analyze the data as quickly as we can and submit the proposal to Labor Advisory Board for discussion. Earlier, in the last term, we had a discussion on the four eighteen contract requirement. And this time, we hope that the consensus can be forged. They might get off, please switch on Mr. Tertens' mic. About the gig economy, I think this is very different from a continuous contract. You need to legislate separately on gig economy. We understand the differences, but we believe there are similarities meanwhile. Next, Mister Kingsley Wong. I have a question about zero oh nine, minimum wage. The goal of statutory minimum wage is to prevent excessively low wages. In twenty nineteen, the rates were frozen and the new SMW rates won't be provided until twenty twenty three. It's been implemented for ten years. And it's common knowledge that the SMW can't catch up with inflation. For example, the SM, SMW rate, visa fee, the median, median income has been on a decline. And it, and at first, some two hundred thousand people benefited from SMW. Now, I reckon just ten thousand benefit from the SMW. And that's the lowest rank in the workforce. That's about two point five percent. This SMW rate cannot catch up with inflation. It cannot catch up with CSA either. Say for a four person household, they have a CSA monthly payment of sixteen, seventeen thousand. And if two of them have SMW or minimum wage, paid on minimum wage, they get fifteen thousand. And it's very unfair. These laborers would rather be self-reliant and earn a minimum wage than to apply for CSA. And it's unfair to them. Is that a reasonable rate? Because at one point, you mentioned that comparing to other places, the average minimum wage rate should be sixty dollars. And when reviewing the SMW rate, there should be a review on the baseline and the formulation of SMW. It's time to conduct a review after ten years of implementation. Can we change your review cycle to an annual cycle? So that you won't freeze the rate for as long as four years? Finally, the minimum wage rate has been frozen for three years. And yet we are seeing inflation soon. So, Secretary, will there be temporary relief measures to help the grassroots workers who are getting paid just a minimum wage rate? And there are also subsidies to support the living of these grassroots workers? Secretary, the SMW rates were adjusted or revised in twenty thirteen, seventeen, nineteen. And in twenty nineteen, the rates, the rates of increase exceeded the inflation rate, albeit insignificant, albeit not substantial, it's rather significant. After twenty nineteen, originally, a review was scheduled. But at the SMW Commission, no consensus was forged. Meanwhile, I've been appealing to the business sector and labor unions to have mutual understanding and come up with a reasonable revision of rates. As to whether we should have annual reviews instead of once every two years? I think the matter has been discussed before. If this is to be adjusted, our law has to be changed. Now, we just, in the coming few weeks, we will be launching a consultation on statutory minimum wage. Members' views will be welcome. Let's hope that with mutual understanding, we'll be able to come up with a reasonable revision. About the sixty dollar statutory minimum wage rate, I did mention that in a Liberal Party form in twenty thirteen.
Chairman, I would like to refer to questions raised by Mister Ah Man Yee and Mister Hong Wan. It's thirty three and oh seven oh eight. They are two related questions. On a question of economic transformation and unemployment, do you consider a longer term social planning? Although you talk about a hundred thousand households. Well, actually, we are going to see digitalization in all kinds of jobs from the lowest ranks to the highly skilled ones. Are you relying on the market to do what is required? On the question of upgrading and transformation of the unemployed. Back then, we said that construction work is not a very nice term. And it has, it failed to attract young entrants. And now we talk about that, 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 a nicer title for these workers. And they are urban beauticians. And there are people who have to left employment because of family issues, family commitments. And we are now relying a lot on foreign domestic helpers. And in the mainland, they have now got a new kind of job called a domestic hygienist. Would you be prepared to do similar things in Hong Kong? Well, when we see changes in our economy or as the member puts it, economic transformation. Well, we need to look into this situation with different trades and industries. And we need information from the industries. And so we need to get feedback and views from the YALB members to address evolving needs and demands. And we need to move ahead with the times. It's the so-called planning of identifying the training needs and trying to outsource a service training provider. Well, usually, we're talking about a lead time of about two years from planning to realization. So we need to gather resources. We need to identify a training service provider. Well, time is required. And I would say that we are not responding quickly enough. So this term of the government has raised the the ceiling of a CF from twenty to twenty five thousand. This is because we want to make sure that the market will remain flexible. Whether we're talking about YALB or the VTC, they would certainly listen to the industry's opinion and will make use of market forces as far as possible. Hong Kong is a city. If we are to rely on local people in meeting all manpower needs, that's not really realistic, given the state of our economy now. I believe in the future, members will continue to pay attention to manpower needs and protection. And it will certainly be one of the important areas for the future government. areas for the future government. Mr. Zhao Xiu Chong, I want to follow up a question. Question oh six seven eight, PWIF, protection of wages on insolvency fund. I am glad to learn about the review, which will be completed and the reimbursement level. Because things have remained unchanged for twenty odd years. I hope this time we are going to see a decent upward adjustment. The disbursement by the Labor Department is usually completed within four weeks. This, I would say, a very satisfactory service level. But things are not quite the same if we hear people submitting the applications. Because the Labor Department is counting the time required after all the necessary documents have been submitted. But usually, well, when the employers close closest down, there will be the need for consideration, and then the case will have to be, have to go to the Labor Tribunal. And maybe Legal A has to be offered first, so perhaps you can streamline all the procedures. Because we're talking about unpaid wages. And the worker rely on the wages to make a living. So can we try to make things to much more user-friendly through a streamlined procedure in respect of payment of unpaid wages? Well, yeah, usually, it would take some time to get all the information necessary to support an application to the Insolvency Fund. So we've been looking at the procedures, and we are trying to see where we can streamline some of them. But this process is still ongoing. So perhaps we don't need all the information to be ready before we start to process the application. Because we're talking about the different wage components, leave and leave balance, et cetera, is on, in addition to wages. So we are doing the review, and we share the concern of members. And perhaps our members can help us can help in some way. The applicant may never have experienced the system, so trade unions can help them. It can act as an intermediary to, they can help the applicant in some way. I believe we should communicate in the further to understand the application procedure. Because the Labor Department is a part of the authority in charge of system, and it must remain neutral. So we have to find ways to ensure, to facilitate the submission of all the necessary documents by the worker so that we can all help them quickly. Mr. Wongton Sek. Thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up LWBL oh two eight, about, it's about employees are retraining. But I have to declare my interest as a member of the Subcommittee on Commerce of the ELP, and I'm also registered instructor of the ELP. The question is about the love upgrading special scheme in twenty-nine, and there have been two phases. And the number of participants range from twenty to forty-eight thousand, and some ninety percent of them were successful. And they are getting an average amount of allowance, deserves three thousand, two thousand five hundred, and something like that. And through retraining, they are, they have rejoined the job market. And they have become a member of the working of the workforce in Hong Kong. Have you discovered cases whereby the trainees would enroll of different programs for the purpose of getting the subsidy, the so-called professional students? If there are such cases, would there be any penalties imposed on them? On the question of training courses, which attract a subsidy, but there are restrictions. But they can only participate or enrolled on two such courses every year. So there's no question of enrolling or in many courses for the purpose of getting this subsidy. And for those who are not employment-linked, there may not be a subsidy at all. For those, for upgrading purposes, there will be a subsidy. We are now have, going to have a new phase of the program. Let's hope that the economy will improve over time. The number of participants dropped in the fourth phase. But there was a clear indication of a low unemployment rate at that time. I hope the community would add with a lot of empathy when it comes to the love upgrading special scheme. Let's hope that we don't need to introduce a sixth phase once the epidemic is over. Any follow-up question? Nothing for me, Chairman. Next, we have Mr. Kingsley Wong. Thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up a question. Oh, two, two, manpower policy in the budget. The Secretary, Financial Secretary, has said that we want to have a very diversified industrial development. And we have to promote tourism, INT, the internet, art culture, et cetera, aviation, and so on. So are you attaching a lot of importance to new industries at the expense of traditional industries? Especially, you are not attaching sufficient importance to maritime and industry. And some of our university graduates are more academically inclined, and they are not really well-suited for jobs. And therefore, some graduates cannot find jobs in the field of specialty. That would be a waste of our manpower, and these young people would feel frustrated. So I have a question. For example, we want to have diversified the economy with the development of different industries. Can we leverage on our cooperation with the mainland so that our, the small ship of Hong Kong, so to speak, would be able to work, find some development with a bigger ship, that is the mainland? And also, can we, how can we dovetail with the tertiary education sector in the mainland? And to me, how can we make sure that the graduates will be able to find a job in the field that they are trained for? And also, we have some deep sea, we see the development of deep sea fish farming operations elsewhere, which require highly skilled workers. How can we encourage the development like this? And can we get some concrete indicators on the number of quality diversified jobs created by our initiatives?
Also, can you keep statistics about the school leavers and the jobs they get? And whether the jobs tally with the courses they've taken, Secretary? On behalf of the government, I thank Mr. Wong for his comments. And in relation to different traditional industries and the assistance given by different government departments, upgrading and transformation, and the use of technology in terms of future manpower planning. In the government reorganization proposal, this work will come under the Labor and Welfare Bureau. But I need to stress that this is a cross-bureau effort. The Labor Welfare Bureau's job is to coordinate and draw up manpower policies in relation to the other policies drawn up. Perhaps the Education Bureau will be looking into, for example, professional training and development policies. About two years ago, a paper was issued after consulting different stakeholders. And that's a paper on vocational training. Well, I didn't take part in it, so I'm afraid I'm not in a position to speak on behalf of the government's work. Does any other member wish to ask questions? If not, I announce that eight special OC sessions, meetings have been held to scrutinize the government estimates totaling twenty-one sessions. I thank the government, the various bureaus and public offices for their attendance. Of course, I need to thank the Secretary as well. And before I adjourn, I want to remind members that the Appropriation Bill twenty twenty-two will be subject to resumption of second reading at the council meeting of the twenty-seventh of April. That's the end of today's meeting. Thank you.